Call to order at 9:26 a.m. Welcome, everybody. Thanks for coming on a cold morning. Thank you again, Christina, for providing space for us. This is the Plymouth County Commission on the Status of Women. We just go through a roll call for the tenants' purposes. I'm Karis North, Chair.
Christina Whitton O'Brien, Vice Chair of Programming and Planning.
Laura Buckley, Treasurer.
Janice Johnson-Plymouth.
Carolyn Riley, Vice Chair of Communication.
Nene Kimball, Chair of the Statewide Commission on the Status of Women.
Jordan Poullet-Latham, Secretary.
Elizabeth Aruda.
So first thing on the agenda is the review and approval of our minutes from October 20, 2018, which circulated and are also available on the Google Docs Drive. Does anybody have any comments?
Do you want me to bring you a copy?
Yes, I do. Minutes and agenda?
Yeah.
Here, I brought another copy. I brought a couple of copies. Thank you. Do you need one?
Yeah.
That's all right. I only brought a few because I didn't want to kill too many trees.
Do you need one? Anyone else? I don't have it online. Okay, thank you.
So are there any? Does anybody else need a copy of the agenda? Does anybody have any comments or questions on or corrections on the minutes? Jordan, the only thing I had is on the call to order. It's just a call to order. It's not a motion to call to order.
Okay.
And then on the executive session, the vote to go into an executive session, that has to be recorded as a roll call vote. So you have to list everybody's name.
Okay.
And whether they said yes or no.
Okay, so go into the executive session notes.
No, on the meeting minutes where it says seven. So first of all, actually, the executive session notes should be. Well, this is fine the way they are. You kept a separate set of executive session notes, and these are fine. The motion to move into executive session for these purposes by Liz, seconded by Carolyn.
Yep.
And then there's no vote there.
Okay.
So we need to have a roll call vote. So you'll just have to list everybody's name and who voted and whether they voted yes or no.
Okay, and if I remember everyone, that was unanimous?
Yeah, it was unanimous.
Okay.
And then in the executive session.
Yes.
When we voted, same thing.
Okay.
So every vote in the executive session has to be recorded as a roll call vote. Okay, anything else? All right. Is there a motion to approve the minutes with the suggested corrections and comments?
I motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Did you get those, Jordan?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so first up is further discussion about the grant application for funding. At our last meeting, we did talk about, and Laura put together, a grant application for a couple of ideas to use some grant money. And Laura got some questions back from the commission's offices and needs some input in helping develop our further responses.
Hi, everybody. Good morning. So at the last meeting we had here back in October, we had discussed different ideas. And Jordan, that was excellent recording what you did for the minutes. So we agreed on a set of guidelines that we'd like to use for the grant purpose. Now, I would like your mind to figure that the grant is not worth a significant amount of money, but we did move forward.
Unfortunately.
Unfortunately. Hopefully that's going to change next year. We did move forward, and I submitted the grant. The grant application was the same principle that we all used when we applied for our position here. Does anyone remember the interactive application? So I couldn't get a copy back to share with you. But I did submit the grant. And the grant, a quick refresher that we all agreed on, would accomplish three goals. The first is marketing money. That money would be used to help us market our hearings for this coming spring. The second one is childcare. The childcare be used for the hearings, and this would be a way to allow people who couldn't afford or arrange childcare by their own means. And last, it would be transportation. And we agreed that the transportation to the hearings could be done in a matter of different ways, whether it be private company like Lyft, or GATRA, or BAT, something to that effect. So those were the three ideas that we had to dispense the grant money. We're going to spend approximately $250 to $300 on each of the three items. And I put that material into our grant application. We did hear back towards the end of December from Mass Commission. Jill Ashton asked that we submit supplementary information on the exact vendors that we were going to use for each of these three ideas we have for the grant. In addition to vendors, they wanted to know backup vendors. So if we, for example, we talked about the YW providing childcare services. If they were unavailable, who would we have as replacement for them? And I will tell you, in my grant writing experience, for this type of money, this is not consistent. This is really not what you would see from other types of grant opportunities. Typically, you would see this type of detail upwards of a $5,000 or $6,000 grant, certainly not $700 or $800. But needless to say, we want the money. We want to move forward with this. So we'd like to be able to submit that information this coming week. And I won't be able to do that without the help of my sister commissioners here because the variation in geographic diversity of the hearings means that I don't have expertise. Only really in Plymouth and the surrounding counties did I be able to put together a vendor list. So for the hearing in the northern part of Plymouth County, I'd really need Karis's help. But for like the south coast part, I would really rely on your help to make sure we have an accurate and then replacement list. So I need to secure that information hopefully by Wednesday or Thursday, and then I'll assemble it, polish it up, and submit it on Friday.
And Laura, do those vendors need to be already state-approved vendors?
They didn't say that.
They don't, actually.
They don't? Okay, because I thought that came up.
So this is one of the things. First of all, let me say from the commission, we love your grant application, and we think it's like one of the best, the idea that you've even thought about childcare, you know, to help people get to these things. We have to work within the restrictions of the state, which is where vendors, like you have to have vendors. We had a whole discussion about whether they actually had to be approved, and what Jill said is, they don't, because, you know, there's a way of either, I don't know what the proper word is, waiver, or something, as long as you have a vendor, because it has to be listed in the cumbersome process that we have to go through to get it. So as long as you put something in there, she doesn't have to make sure it's like on the very long list of vendors, because there is a way of getting whatever it is, like it's okay. So, but it is a.
So in order to get the grant, we have to have specific vendors identified. We can't say, this is what we want to do with this money, because the grant money is going to come to us and we're going to expend it, but it can only be expended for the very specific vendors that we've identified? Is that?
Um, let's see. That's a good question. If you've got, maybe this is where backup would be useful, because, let's say, the one, so you've got something else. All I know is, just from the discussion in the budget and personnel meeting, was that part of this thing that we have to do is we have to put vendors in, like there's a line item for it. So I would think that, so I don't know the answer to that, but I think we are talking about such small amounts. We're hoping in the future, like this is the first year, it's almost like a pilot program. Our request for our budget request from the state is to increase this line item so we'll have like more funding. So anyway, there's a question that we can ask Jill, which is, does it then have to be those? And it's a really good question.
The reason I ask is because we.
Give you backup information.
We, you know, applied for the grant on the, with the grant timing, but we're still planning and haven't said anything definite yet for our first hearings, which that's part of what we're going to try to say today. So it's still, the pieces haven't all come together. To be able to answer the questions is definitively, I guess, depending on what happened. So, you know, maybe what we should do actually is, unless there's more big picture questions, maybe we should reorder the agenda a little bit and go back to the spring hearing planning question, and then follow up with the grant, because I think we have to make some decisions about the hearing first.
Right.
Before we can finish answering the grant questions.
Yes.
So are there any other, anything else, Laura, that you need to let us know about the follow-up on a grant application?
I would like to add that the vendors, they don't need to be a state-approved vendor list.
Sure.
We are able to collect in-kind donations, so that's something I'd like to just put out there. If we, like I mentioned, we could spend, you know, $50 in one category and $400 in another. I think from the texts I received from Jill, that would be certainly feasible. I don't foresee there being an issue with allocating funds to one category over another if we were to receive in-kind donations. So if we were to ask Lyft to make this a donation that it provides, the commission, I think that would be fine. So as we reach out to the vendors in our respective areas, make sure we mention that. And I know that you had mentioned that could be a possibility with the YW for sure.
Well, we're in Bristol County, right? So we want to be mindful of that. But if I may, like I thought the idea for the YM was a brilliant idea, right? Especially with their drop-in childcare center and the way they operate as childcare, right? Where they can be, take the liability off of like if your child has, like if I drop my child off and I need to change a diaper, they don't do it. That is a part of their different liability structures, so they go and get the parents. Like, so it's, I think they're a great fit for us, but I can definitely see where Jill's coming from to come for this grant application, to have an MOU or some sort of agreement where we have the date, we know exactly what the YM charges for those staff to be there. And you're right, maybe they do offer the space as the in-kind donation, but we still have to pay their staffers for their childcare purposes. So I think that makes total sense, and like Karis is saying, it's a good way to push us forward, like, let's have a date, let's make those calls to the YM, and have a space secured, and then that's even a stronger grant application, going with a partner. We're going to have this abstract future hearing, like, does that make sense? I'm just saying, like, as someone who submits multiple grants a week, like, the better we have that MOU signed.
Was it MOU? Nancy, just to top your head, do you know that MOU is part of that? It wasn't mentioned, but that's a good point.
Well, we could do it and be better, right? Like, to have it done, be like, well, look at them.
Even, right, just a basic agreement.
Yeah.
That just says, we agree to use these services on these dates for this price. You're going to donate something in kind or not, you know? And then we can put that in front of the main commission as part of our supplement to our application. That's a great idea.
So we're working hard.
Yeah. That's what we answered.
I know, and I guess something for us to talk about, because I know for our experiences when we do like info sessions or public hearings, there are a couple incentives you can use for transportation, right? So you can use taxi vouchers, which is how we really work with like low-income women, is offering them taxi vouchers or bus vouchers. You can also offer gas cards, and that would take having, that's more on our end, as opposed to having to go to GATRA and get an agreement from them. I guess, right, food for thought for us to talk about, but like, what do we want that $250 to go to for transportation? Is it that we then say, if you come to this meeting, everyone gets a $5 gas card or $10 gas card, and that's the incentive for them? Food for thought, right? I'm opening up to the table for discussion, because to get GATRA to sign on to something, just the bureaucracy of it could just take a while.
Yeah, that's logical.
Yeah, no, I think that, how would we, so, I guess, first of all, again, I think if we know the location, we would know what sort of transportation service is that location. But also then, if everybody who comes gets a $5 gas card, I mean, is that literally, you know, a preloaded debit card?
Yeah.
Essentially? And is that, I guess my question is, is that how do we then, if the money is to be expended, just thinking about procurement in the broad sense, not saying that this is, if the money is to be expended specifically for gas and we give somebody a $5 preloaded debit card, we can't guarantee that they're actually going to spend that on gas. So that might, unless it's for a gas station, and then we have no idea what gas station is going to work for them. So I'm not sure that, I'm not sure how that would work. I think that would be maybe a conversation to follow up with Jill, if that's something we think might be helpful and be flexible. I don't know what GATRA takes in terms of payment, or BAT takes in terms of payment.
So is this the transportation issue where you're not so sure? Because I'm sending her and Sarah Looker, our budget chair and treasurer, this question. So it's mostly, it's around the transportation, where you might be giving a preloaded debit card and not sure where they're going to use it for the gas or something?
We can't guarantee that they'd use it for the gas.
Yeah, all right.
So do we just keep it as a taxi voucher? In that you partner with the taxi company and say, we have this amount of money.
Or Lyft.
Yeah, exactly. So, which I've never actually done that before, but I know enough people I could ask about that. I know like the Women's Center does that. Like our Domestic Violence Shelter in town, they have an account with the taxi company.
Yeah, DTA, Department of Transit Assistance, when they have clients that are going off to the shelters, they will do some sort of voucher for the taxi for them to get there to the shelter.
Yeah.
But I don't know how it's done.
Right, right, me neither.
Yeah. So I, my sense is that there has to be a direct link for the payment, that somehow it's paid directly to that vendor or vendors, as opposed to being, I mean, yes, it would be much simpler to give everybody a $5 card, but I would think that does not comply with the grant rules or state procurement law.
I'm going to ask them about this also, is they're given such a low amount, because it's like you don't know which taxi and you don't know which gas station.
But you have to be careful about, yeah, anyway.
They may be like, I'm not going to take a taxi. I mean, use it or something.
Right, yeah, and, you know. And I just think that could contravene the grant rules and state law, so I just wanted to.
Do you think it would be helpful to kind of decide where?
Yeah.
Because like, for instance, if you were thinking about Brockton area, then I could go to that and find out what's required if we need to do the transportation.
Yep.
And then, you know, kind of look at several locations, maybe.
So why don't we skip ahead, unless there are any more general questions on the grant? Let's skip ahead then and talk about spring 2019 hearing or hearings, dates, locations, and then we can think a little bit more. Agenda, I think, is less important today. But in our last meeting, we talked about having, it's our lovely, very well-done minutes, March and April in Plymouth County, obviously, one in Plymouth and one in Brockton, we had talked about. I've thought about that a little bit more. I think March is really ambitious, given that we meet monthly. And I know we have a deadline to report back to the commission by June, so, and it's our first time, maybe we should just start with one and not, you know, and do it well. I'd rather do one well than two poorly.
That's a good idea.
So I'd like to suggest that we pick, do one in April, find some dates, and then settle on a location. And I'm flexible about any, all of that, and I would, you know, being in the northern part of the county, I think that, you know, obviously, our population centers are really Brockton, Plymouth, and so I would defer to all of you on all that. So what do you all think?
That sounds good.
Yeah.
Yep, agreed, agreed.
Well, we just, there was just a hearing in Brockton back in November, so I, and I think that, and it was fairly well-attended.
Yeah.
And so I think that, you know, that area, you know, the Mass Commission and the Brockton Commission have that. It was recorded, we have the testimony and hearing information. So I would recommend doing another part of the county.
Okay.
You know, since we just did Brockton and Plymouth.
And before that, we did Wareham, which we had talked about in our October minutes. So for us coming from south coast, that's still within, you know, it wasn't that long ago. That was still January 2018 or something, so.
Sounds right, yeah.
So I think either like Plymouth or Hingham or something, you know, maybe further north. But I think Plymouth probably has more diversity and, you know, might be a better area.
I think there's better transportation in Plymouth. I think that there are probably more women of need in Plymouth than there are in Hingham. Not that there are, not that, you know, Hull and Situated and those other communities don't have women who have needs either, but it feels right. And this is sort of where we're at least spending a lot of our time and where we have, I think, perhaps the most connections to get going. You know, I don't, I think we have just, again, have to be careful about spreading ourselves too thin, but, you know, Plymouth makes sense. We had talked about the Old Colony YMCA, is that?
Right.
All right, so do we, anybody have any other suggestions for location?
Well, Last Resort could be here. I will be in charge of the keys.
No, no, I'm just talking generically, not a specific location, area, geographic location.
Oh, geographic location, I'm sorry.
Plymouth-Brock, we've talked about Plymouth, Brockton, Hingham, we talked about south coast.
Taunton.
Bristol.
Taunton's Bristol County.
Yep. I think Plymouth is great. It's a location for all of us, too.
There's a lot of resources in Plymouth. I volunteered last night at a warming station, and they got a lot of their food from the Plymouth Food Bank. I mean, they were, yeah, they were, yeah, so I was like, oh, I didn't know that. They're like, yeah, we have a lot of food sometimes.
I'll actually be with the United Way of Greater Plymouth County in two weeks, so I can let them know, you know, once we get this moving.
That's great.
That we can make, right, reaching out to those connections that we have in Plymouth to help publicize it, too.
Okay, so Plymouth, and we want to shoot for April.
So now we have to do a date? Do we do it during the week, like we did Thursday, or is it?
I think we do it during the week. Nina, in your experience on holding these hearings across the state, what has the state commission tried? Have you done weekend and weekday? Have you done midday, evening, morning?
Yeah, that's a good question.
In your experience, what has worked?
So I think that what we've ended up doing is, we have chosen a weekday, and our public hearings, we've decided to hold from 4:30 in the afternoon to 6:30, with the idea that where people, you know, where people work, there's some people who will be able to get to the early part of the hearing, maybe, and still be able to get home because of dinnertime. And then there's some people who could maybe get towards the end of the day, and because they can't leave work till 5:00. So we've hit on that time as a way of trying to figure out how to make the timing accessible with people's, both their work schedules and their family schedules. So that's what we've ended up doing.
What do you guys all think about the date? Do you have any?
I think we should try it.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. And then you have a business meeting afterwards, correct? We, so this is, again, one of the things that we try to do, where we've got people coming from all over the state, and, you know, it's the same thing that you guys are trying to do, is not add yet another date. So we combine our public hearings with our monthly full commission meeting, and we have chosen to do our full commission meeting after our hearing. I mean, that's something you guys can decide what works for your schedules. So whenever we have a public hearing, we go from 4:30 to 6:30 is a public hearing, and then we have an hour full commission meeting afterwards. And on the months that we don't, so we hold four public hearings a year, on the months that we don't have a hearing, we have a two-hour full commission meeting, but we don't tack on a two-hour, to a two-hour public hearing. That's just, that's the way, that's the way we do it. But we, you know, we're really trying not to make our commissioners have to trap, you know, we're trying to, you know, bring these hearings. It's just like, so for Advocacy Day, which has actually been changed to May 21st, everybody, where everybody comes to the State House, that is our second semi-annual regional commission meeting. We always have that on the same day. So then again, for commissioners, regional commissioners who are coming to the State House for Advocacy Day, we also hold the semi-annual regional commission meeting that day, so you guys don't have to travel twice. So, you know, just anyway, that's something you can put down just in your minutes. We just got the date confirmed, I think in the last month. It's May 21st at the State House, probably starts at 9:00 in the morning. Usually, the regional commission convening is usually around by 1:00, like after the Advocacy Day, something like that. We'll get the dates.
Great, thank you.
So as we look at dates, I just, and I'll put it in our notes, I'm guessing we should avoid the week of April vacation. So in Plymouth, that is the week of April 15th, so.
So I throw out the date of Thursday, April 25th.
So not to be a total downer, I am unavailable on Tuesdays and Thursdays in April because of town meeting. So I would need it to be on a Wednesday. Does Wednesday, the 24th, work for folks? I teach class, but I can get a soap, so that's fine.
It's from 4:30 to 6:30, so I would just have to leave by 6:00 for class.
Yeah, and Wednesday would be better for me if I'm going to try to meet it, because I have a feeling we have a full commission. We, I think we might have our public hearing in Dorchester on Thursday, April 24th, if that's the fourth Thursday. It is, it's the fourth Wednesday, yes.
No, 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 it's the Thursday is Thursday. But I think Wednesday, if it's the fourth, probably works for me if I can get down here.
Would you want, are you, I know you have to leave, different people have to leave. Could we have a quorum available for a business meeting thereafter at 6:45 for an hour, if we're here? Is that, you know, is there enough for a quorum? Okay, all right, so we could do a business meeting afterwards. And we could use this space, and we could also talk about the Y, because there's childcare available there. And do they have meeting space available at the Y? I'm not familiar with their.
Is anyone a member of the Plymouth YMCA?
I think it's brand new.
It is, it's new, yeah. It's not a great location.
No, it's not.
Where is it? Do you know where like Red Brook is, Exit 3, Born Road?
I'm a member of the Y, it's far, but I don't know if it's part of the, because they have like the Hockamock and the different Ys, but I'm a member of the Y in Brock, you know, I know the Ys, both in Brock.
That's not a great, that's not a great, I mean, that's far. This is more, this is more central?
This is on the transit line, this location is.
Okay.
This is a great location, actually, for a hearing.
Well, even the public library, I know we, I just did a meeting at our public library in Beckford, and, you know, they have like children's room, which kind of be, we'd have to figure out childcare.
We definitely hold, we hold a lot of our hearings at public libraries.
They, so they're public, but they're not. I had made that call all the summer, and they wanted to charge us for it.
Yeah. And I would have, I think we should have a follow-up call with them to talk about that.
Yeah, on their website, it says it's free to nonprofit groups.
Yeah, like mine is just free, because we were 501(c)(3), but I think you guys are right, we just have to talk to them.
I think we just have to talk to them. I mean, I know we use, we definitely use libraries a lot, and we don't pay.
So they have three rooms, there's the Otto Fellow Room, which capacity of 250.
Wow.
Seating 130. That sounds like the right room, and the others are too small. The one is for 24 people, and the others for 35 people. So it sounds like the Otto Fellow.
I actually sit on a board director, that's caller. She's lovely. I think that she would know more about our group, maybe.
Who is one of the directors at the library?
Yeah, Jen Harris. She runs the Plymouth Public Library.
Yeah.
And she.
She's one of the trustees?
She's the library director.
She's the library director. I think she'd probably love to know. We're new, too, you know? So who are you? We do, you know?
It's right down the street.
Oh, I love the library.
And is there space there for childcare, and would they be willing to have?
That's, yeah, that's another issue there.
You know, would they, you know, would they be willing to have a collection of children, and then we would have to hire someone to, you know, to do the childcare? And that whole piece becomes a little more, which is what we'd have to do here as well if we wanted to provide childcare. And then we'd have to come up with some waiver forms and all of those other things.
But I think they have that. They have that application.
Story groups and stuff like that.
Yeah, because they do, I know in Brockton, they, you know, they have different things they do with the kids.
And I have to say, they have a pajama story time that day from 6:30 to 7:00. And it looks like that room's not booked, the large room on the 24th.[1735.86]
Yeah.
So I can see their schedule in advance. They have a children's event that night. They have a philosophy club meeting that night. They do have a lot, a couple of things going on at the same time.
It's a busy, it's a busy library.
It's awesome. Yeah.
Well, it's worth exploring. Alright, I can take the lead on just letting her know who the group is. Somebody else that may want to take the lead on arranging the childcare.
I can, I can do that. I actually have an idea, I was kind of bringing it up, but Plymouth South High School does have a, as part of their VOTech, they have a childcare division. So, yeah.
Cool.
So could we then hold the meeting at Plymouth South High School? And then they, so that parents and kids can be on site together?
That's not a bad idea.
Like, I wouldn't want to leave my one and a half-year-old out of different location.
So their childcare program is onsite or do they come offsite?
So it is onsite, but I will ask them if they will come offsite.
Okay.
Or whether there's any chance of holding a, a hearing. Their auditorium or something that night if it's not being used.
And where is Plymouth South?
It's right, it's about, oh, your south is that.
North is right across the street.
And Plymouth South is good, they finished their brand new.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
I haven't been over, I haven't, I have not been over there.
That sounds like, you know, it does look nice.
Somebody on their list?
No.
Yeah, that's the, that's sort of the current, modern mass building style high school.
Wow, okay, that'd be great.
Alright, so Laura is going to talk to the library director about space. Carolyn is going to talk to the childcare program at Plymouth South about coming offsite. And then, is there anybody who wants to reach out to the school itself?
I can do that.
Okay. And find out about using space on that day.
Carolyn, is this childcare, I mean, a vacation program, is it just Plymouth South? Like, it wouldn't be connected with Plymouth North, or?
No, it's anyone in the town can drop their kids off.
Yeah, right.
Interesting. But they have a specific VOTech program as part of the high school, that's great.
That's awesome.
Because it's so hard to get into the VOTech schools.
It is.
It's wonderful to have that. Okay, so we have a tentative date. So, not, today is the 12th. Not to add to our workload, but I'm wondering if it makes sense also to have all these conversations and come back in a short period of time, like in two weeks and have another meeting. And then go back and finish up the grant work because we really, if, if we have confirmation of locations, we'll have to make some decisions if we want to do it at the high school, we want to do it at the library.
Flesh it out.
You know, flesh it out, have somebody talk to, you know, transportation and see if, you know, what we think about getting transportation for either of those locations. And maybe try to flesh it out just a little bit more because I think at this point, another two weeks probably isn't going to make a huge difference with the grant process. And Nina, what do you think about that?
Okay, so Jill just got back to me on my question. Yes, they can use vendors that are not state-approved, I was just making sure that I was right on that. Please know the process will, like, take slightly longer, not to discourage, rather manage the expectations. If a vendor or backup vendor is listed, but the Regional Commission finds it needs to use a different vendor, it's reasonable to amend the proposal. Supported by an informed narrative as long as we are still in the estimate range. More information, more information and specificity is strongly preferred. I, I would list however many you can.
Well, then.
The last question regarding voucher debit card might need a bit of research, I'm happy to do that. It's like, you know, we're all new to this process, too. That's, we've never done this before. I just think that, that the more you list, given what it is that you're trying to do, would be helpful, helpful. She just wants to be very careful in terms of us being audited to make sure we're doing it.
Yeah, yeah, of course, absolutely.
So, now, let me just say one other thing, though, which is, the process, so, the way, the way this works is that the Budget Personnel Committee, which meets once a month, they get your, you know, they get the applications and then they are supposed to approve it, they can talk to the Executive Committee and then the full commission is supposed to approve it. Now, the Executive Committee can meet if, if the full commission can't meet. I'm just, I'm just worried about the timing of getting your approval. Our next full commission meeting is January 24th. I was hoping that we would be able to get it by then.
Maybe we can, I have some ideas.
Okay, so I'm just putting that out there. I, I also know, like, I would really love to be able to get your funding done. And, so, and then our next Executive Committee meeting, and we can, I mean, we, you know, the Executive Committee can approve things, would be, so January 24th, the second Thursday of February, would be the next, these are the, these are the two times we would be able to meet, you know.
That's Valentine's.
Yeah, just, just letting you guys know that that's, you know, from our, and, you know, we want to get this, we really want to get yours done, we think it's great.
So, it sounds like then, just from those texts, that if we have proposals and backups and we don't have to actually decide on which one we're going to use, that's sufficient. So we could say, you know, we're going to have our meeting, you know, we're looking to have our meeting here or here and we're going to provide childcare either, you know, we're hoping to provide childcare from these sources.
Correct.
And so that should be sufficient.
Yeah.
Correct. So then we don't need to come back and talk about it again. We can, we'll wrap this up and make a list so we're all on the same page before we're done. But I think then we have enough information to go back. We won't have MOU signed, but we can tell them that we're, we'll, you know, we'll work on that and, you know, get them promptly.
Right, which means that we, if, if you guys can do that, we would be able to, so the Budget Personnel Committee meets on February 13th and then reports to the Executive Committee, which meets on February 14th. You know, so then it could be, we have it all, we've approved it, we might be able to approve it without then having to wait to our full commission meeting so that you guys, you know.
And do you have to approve it before it goes to the full commission? Or could the full commission approve it at the 24th?
Well, you say, no, we can't.
It's got to go through the committee first.
But the Executive Committee would be able to approve it without the full commission because we are allowed to act when the full commission is not meeting.
Okay.
So I'm just trying to figure out how.
And you could give the full commission a sense of what the application is like.
Oh, absolutely.
Talk about it on the 24th.
Yes.
So if we could do that. If Laura was thinking about trying to get the updated information in by the end of next week, you would have time to have that information, to at least get a sense of the full commission on the 24th. It can go to budget on the 13th and Executive Committee on the 14th.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. That would be great, guys.
Yep. Alright, so let's, let's keep on working to that date and keep.
Having one hearing really simplifies everything because I was thinking, we were having three, I didn't know how I was going to keep this down.
Yeah, no.
Sets of vendors.
No, yeah, I think, I think we, and we only talked about two and even that, let's do one well. And, and, oh, publicize it well and, you know, keep it focused.
Even one, having one is, is a lot.
I mean, more than one in less than a year of being in existence. We had our first meeting in August. We had a hearing in April.
You had us pass our bylaws that first month, so that helped.
That's because Harris is amazing.
No, 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 Harris has, has some things she's not so amazing about, we'll talk about later in, in old business. So I, I, yeah, there's some stuff I've dropped the ball on, so don't worry, in any of it. Okay.
Can, can I?
Yep.
Janice, do you mind reaching out to GATRA? Is that something you can do?
Yeah, I can call GATRA.
Do you, are you?
We don't use GATRA.
We don't use GATRA?
Uh-uh, but I can call them and just ask them, like, what they do for transportation.
So what is GATRA? What's GATRA?
The Greater Attleboro, Attleboro Transit Authority.
What is, what does Brockton use?
They use, um, GATRA. It's that, do you want to call that or GATRA? Got it.
Can you call them?
Yeah, I'll call.
Okay.
I'll call.
Alright.
So GATRA obviously is that?
I don't know. I don't know, I think they're two different.
They're two separate.
Yeah, I saw GATRA, I see the fun name and I supplied that. Here's a go-to word that we can use, I don't know.
I thought that was always.
That was a security GATRA.
Brockton Assistance Transportation, it's something Brockton area. Transportation. But I can call both.
So to see if they would be interested in working with us for providing vouchers for women to attend at either the library or here.
Yes.
Right, I also want to mention, if that doesn't, if they don't supply vouchers.
Or the school.
Oh, it's the Greater Attleboro, Taunton Regional Transit Authority.
I'm just saying what terms it covers.
They don't even know. It's a dollar a ride.
Oh, really?
For GATRA?
GATRA. If anyone, just put that up there. But to get to Plymouth South, I don't know that they service that area.
That's why I feel like a, like a connection or an outreach would be a good call to make that if we have someone, maybe they can make someone available to do certain pickups at certain locations to bring them there.
Make a bus available?
It does include Plymouth, I mean, it says Attleboro, Taunton, Duxbury, Foxborough, Franklin, Kingston, Mansfield, Marshfield, Middleborough, Norfolk, North Attleboro, Norton, Plainville, Plymouth, Rainham, Seco, Wyrm, and Rantham, so that's, that's.
It's our only public transit car.
How many vouchers would we need? Or would you?
But you're right, we wouldn't be talking about public transit that day. We'd have to timely charter because the end of service is at 10:00 p.m.
We use that, good to know.
So, just trying to think through this, so in terms of the locations we're considering, which is the Plymouth South High School, the Plymouth County Library, or the Plymouth County?
Plymouth Town Library.
Is the Plymouth Town Library? Yeah, right, sorry. Or the Plymouth County Offices. GATRA serves these offices, correct?
Correct.
A part of the regular library?
Yes.
But not Plymouth South High School?
They did it last year, but Plymouth South just rebuilt and I don't know if that's part of their new. I don't want to.
You could, you could, you could get the roots on, on, online. Okay, and that probably doesn't service any of these areas because they're just Brockton. Okay. And then there's still also the possibility of arranging individual vouchers perhaps with Lyft or Uber. My, my understanding, and I don't know if this is true or not, is that, you know, Lyft is more committed to providing safe rides for women after the Uber stuff. I would think that perhaps.
And then there was that one, one that's just women?
But that's only in Boston, isn't it?
Is it, just, yeah.
Yeah.
Plymouth's a man in it. I wonder if they go down Long Time Road?
I was just looking at the.
They must. They must go down State Road.
No, the State Road is.
Oh, State Road, not Long Time.
But like, when I call GATRA, how many vouchers, I mean, am I, say, am I asking for?
Well, let's, let's talk about two things. Let's talk about whether they'd be willing to provide a bus that, that picks up and drops off at multiple locations to go specifically, specifically for this event.
Okay.
Well, you know that they would just serve the library, right? If they don't serve Plymouth South, right?
Oh, they definitely serve the library.
They already serve the library and this, this location.
Yeah, so that's the thing, right.
But we would go with that route.
There's the library.
We have to change the sign because GATRA ends at 6:00, so the hearing couldn't be until 6:30.
But is that where the question of grant funding comes in? Like, what would they charge us from six to 6:30?
So, well, let's, let's, let's ask a couple of questions. One, would they be willing to do a special route for us that had, you know, three or four pickups around Plymouth County that dropped off at the library or one of these three locations by 4:30 and picked up at, you know, 6:40 and, and made around home?
Yeah, and they don't, they definitely don't go to the Plymouth South.
Would they do that for us and then we could say, you know, free bus and then we could just pay GAT, you know? And, and what would they charge for that? And, you know, tell them who we are and what we're doing and we're trying to make it accessible for women. So perhaps, you know, I'm just thinking off the top of my head, they, you know, they start picking up at 3:45 and they go, or, or 3:30 even. So, you know, and they go not just in Plymouth, but they go somewhere towards the South Coast and somewhere towards Brockton. I'm not sure what's a reasonable route, but, you know, and Plymouth is a big county. But if, if there's a couple of places where we think their population's, I wish we could say, bus will be picking up at, you know, 3:30 here and 3:45 here and 4 o'clock here and 4:15 here and drop you at the Plymouth County Library at 4:30 and it'll pick you up and reverse the route and take you home at the end of the day. Is that something they'd be willing, you know? And I would guess that if we had 20 people, we'd be lucky.
Right.
Yeah.
And, and it, my guess is that there'll be less than that and it could be, who knows? It doesn't matter, for them, it's all, it's all one cost, no matter. But if they have, you know, smaller buses, you know, if they have vans or something like that that they could provide service for, depending on the size. And maybe we need people to call up and indicate interest or something, I don't know. Just sort of thinking off the top of my head about how something like that might work. And what would they charge for that? Alright, let's find out about that.
Another option would perhaps be that vouchers for the buses and so forth to get there.
Right.
And then taxi vouchers home.
Right.
That's a great idea, too.
Simple, maybe, I don't know.
Yep.
All the stops.
Well, no, agreed, it is tricky and.
It's probably less expensive.
Because then when they leave, they can get the voucher and.
I think if I was, if I was going to take it, I'd be more interested in that I know the route there, the bus, and I'm going to get home and not have to go home from some designated spot to then go home.
Right.
The more cumbersome we make it, the less likely I'm going to want to.
Because they may get to a spot, but they need to, need to get picked up from there. You know, depending on where they are.
Yep, no, that's true, that's true. So then what, what would, you know, what would they charge for either a single ride or a round-trip voucher? For, is it only a dollar a ride?
And I think free, too, if you are handy. I just had another question, Harris. We're talking about physical presence of people in need, scrape. What about providing an opportunity for people or advocating for people to come to the hearing that serve the population that we're most trying to help? So people that work at Social Community Action Council.
Yep.
The people that work at ETA.
Yep, food bank.
Food bank. Because they're going to be a really strong voice for the mass.
Now, if I remember, we have that list, Liz had her students compile our list of Plymouth partners.
They were working on it, yeah.
Yeah. And I've been adding to it, so I think you're absolutely right. Well, and they should help us market the event.
Exactly, yeah.
Identify them to market and then really see if they can each have a seat at the table.
Right. And if there's a place we can allow food, food would be a nice, you know, carrot to bring people in.
Can we put in our budget, coffee and snacks?
Or even donations from the community organization. We talked about that the last meeting, providing food.
Did we?
We.
We talked about, we talked about marketing materials and.
No, I didn't.
It's also dinner time for some folks or snack time for some people.
You might have to just, you know, donate.
Dinner time.
Bring stuff. Right.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, check your.
No, it's really, I think it's really important to get the, whatever the social services groups are that, you know, work with women to come to the hearing to talk to you guys about what are they doing? What are the needs as well as the, you know, the population of people who just, you know, want to come to talk. Sort of combination.
Sure.
Yeah, I think we want testimony from all aspects of, of the area, including the people who provide services, not just the people who are using services.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I think, too, one of the things that we had talked about last time, and I know we're kind of got the idea from Janice, and we just did something at the YW where we can create an online survey for people to fill out, too. So people that can't come for whatever reason, you can use Google Forms, create it, it will, it will, Google does all of the calculating for you, for people's responses. You can create a bit.ly link to it and share it that way, too, for people that can come, so.
I'd be willing to take that on as well or to have as part of a student-professor collaborative project on developing that. So, and sort of researching more, or finding out more, actually, also from the Statewide Commission, you know, what does that form look like as a template or something for us to work off of? I'm not sure.
Or see if any of the other regional commissions, commissions have already done that. It's interesting what they've, what they have done, so that's a good question.
Okay, great. And Liz, maybe that's a conversation, is that a conversation she should have with Jill about what other regional commissions have done or, or, or reach out to the chairs directly?
Well, okay, so our wonderful program director, Isabel, just, just, her last day was this past week. Oh, I know, so sad. Well, she's from Ireland and she's getting married. Well, she's from Ireland and she's getting married. And under US law, visa law, she is not allowed to work five months after she gets married to an American.
That is crazy.
Well, it's to avoid people from just marrying her to get over to the US and.
That's a change in the law because that's a fairly recent change in the law.
Anyway, so.
Will they be willing to take her back?
Well, you know, I mean, we said, we want, you know, I think she's going to use this as the opportunity to do something else because we said we would love to have you. Anyway, we have actually just hired a new person, so it was really exciting. And her name is Sasha, and she is, she's done incredible work with all kinds of diverse communities and is, so, we're excited, but it does mean we have a new person who does know anything about the regions. So we could ask Jill whether, I'm emailing Jill back saying thank you for this information and I'm going to say that you guys are going to try to get the information as their way that it can be, you know, looked at at the next budget pool committee. I can just ask Jill whether she knows whether any of the regional commissions have done a survey of their, you know, already.
Brockton did a survey.
We did a survey.
Yeah.
The Brockton Municipal, the Brockton Women's Commission, we did a survey.
Somebody created it and then we passed out hard copies for those who didn't have access to a computer. And then, I think we got like 88 to 100 back.
Wow, that's great.
Well, there's, I don't think we have that I know of. I mean, I've only been here for, it's only my third year, but, but there you go.
Did you get those, the survey?
Oh, we have it.
We have it? Thank you. It's already, it's in the Google Docs?
Well, Janice, we have all her copies.
But I'll scan it up a little bit to the Google Drive.
Yeah, would you scan it and upload it to the Google Drive?
I gave them a paper copy.
Okay. And it will be in my file, which needs to be better ordered.
I'm happy to help.
Okay.
Having just made one for the YW.
Yeah, perfect. Okay, good. Wow, we're making progress here. All right. So, let me just recap because we've talked about a lot of things. We're shooting for April 24th, 4:30 to 6:30 at either Plymouth South High School, Plymouth Town Library, Plymouth County offices.
Should we have one more location?
I think pretty much plenty.
Okay.
Hopefully this basis, a backup, I mean, obviously we'll have to find out. That would be the easiest one to find out.
I'll do that, yeah.
And then, just to sort of sort through, Laura is going to talk to the library director, Carolyn's going to talk to Plymouth South, and Christina's going to talk to the county. Carolyn's also going to talk to Plymouth about childcare, both onsite and offsite. Janice is going to talk to GATRA about vouchers, bus rides. Liz is going to work on a survey to be available in advance and then a hard copy at the hearing. And then I think the last thing we need to think about is, so that means for our grant application, I think we can tell them, this is our proposed date, these are our proposed locations, we're looking into as vendors, GATRA for transportation vendors, and also Lyft. And if there's somebody who's willing to reach out to Lyft.
I can do that.
Okay. And Carolyn will also talk to Lyft.
So, Caris, you're bringing up a good point. If we're going to be doing this work over the next few days, weekdays, how do we reconvene and share the information with our sister commissioners? Me and me, because I want to get the grant application complete and submitted.
So I think, I think what I'm hearing is, we could just say, these are our proposed vendors. We don't know yet which one it's going to be because it's going to depend on date and location, but I think that's sufficient for the project to move forward so that we've identified our vendors are going to be GATRA or Lyft or local taxi services, still to be determined, sort of maybe in that order. And I don't think we need to have a final information yet.
Okay, so we're going to see if the date is definitely going to be able to be.
Well, we also have to confirm that date, yes, but, so let's do this. Let's, if each of you, I want to be careful about open meeting law issues. If each of you who are working on locations can find out availability and let me know, and just me know, as soon as you can, then I'll work with you, Laura, on how we translate that into the grant application response.
Okay, that sounds good.
I think we should say that April 24th is our targeted date and we have three potential locations, these are our locations, and, you know, not necessarily priority order because I think we might want to talk about that again. And I guess when you're at talking to these entities and it looks like Plymouth has that library room available, you know, you need to also ask about whether we could, if there's space and how we could do childcare. Same, I think, here, Christina. Find out how far out they need us to commit to that date because maybe we should talk about sort of a follow-up meeting sooner rather than later so we can make some final decisions and get those dates and then start talking about publicity and marketing. No, what do you guys think about that?
What if they don't have that meeting, what if they don't have that date available? Do you want to come up with another date that then you can say, well, what about this? Without then coming back and.
Maybe have some.
Yeah.
Sure. That's a good idea.
I'd throw in the next Wednesday, May 8th, maybe, or May 1st?
Maybe, 1st.
Yeah, I think that's good.
Yeah, I mean, why don't you do like the next, like, three Wednesdays? Unless, of course, you find out.
No. Caris, did I tell meeting, you made one for some towns?
It's not that I, every, every community is different and has it on differently.
I think Plymouth might be May 1.
Oh, you can look that up, yeah. That I can find. Yeah, if that's Plymouth Town Meeting, then we probably shouldn't.
So backup, Christina, what would you say, the backup, the next one was May?
I would say May 1st.
First is the next Wednesday, right, okay.
Isn't Plymouth Town Meeting usually on a Saturday?
They've been doing some of the budget stuff in the week beforehand, the same time as Saturday mornings. Like the big, like, town meeting numbers go on Saturday.
Oh, okay.
But I just want to make sure.
All town meeting day. Elections and town meeting information.
I'm looking at 2018 town meeting like it's 2018.
I wrote that on a check the other day.
Whoops. Okay, here we go. Oh, May 13th, Roll Set.
Okay, great.
Oh, wait, that's Canton. Caris, I'm going to see if it posted. If it is May 1st, I'll call and find out the day, or the time, rather. Sometimes they don't start till seven.
Yeah, that's true. Just check my other client's May Town Meeting, I think it's later, it's May 13th. No, yeah, May 13th, 2019 is for our town.
Okay.
That's a Monday. That's usually July.
Like Monday, Tuesday?
No, Monday, Wednesday. They do Monday, Wednesday. You know, one client that does Tuesday, Thursday, one client that does Monday, Wednesday, and I've spent Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday in town meeting.
Better than holding them on the same night.
Well, that happens, too. We have to back up for each other quite a bit in my firm, so, yeah, that does happen. Just actually, while I'm doing this. But in any event, that will figure out.
What's the CBA?
Zoning Board of Appeals, that's fine. Historic Mill and Center Steering Shallow.
That's from the Shallow Room.
That's from eight to 10. Yeah, that's okay.
So I don't see anything, any town meeting. Then that's with May 1st, then, if they even posted that as a date that.
Yeah, let's use that as a backup date. I think if we, I don't think we should do too many.
Okay.
Backup dates, because it'll get confusing. Let's try, just try for the two dates for now.
Oh, it's in April. I'm sorry, Plymouth Town Meeting, spring is in April.
Oh, does it have the.
There's no date, this is to convene in April.
Okay. Well, let's hope it's not April 24th.
It's a Saturday.
It's a Saturday, typically, okay, all right, good. Okay, so then, we've got childcare, we've got transportation, and was there, oh, we were going to spend some money on marketing, too? Is that the other piece?
Marketing is the last piece. I actually have some thoughts on marketing, I wanted to run by the group.
But they didn't ask any questions about marketing.
They went with the vendor.
Oh, we such.
Same, yeah, we went with the vendor and then a backup vendor. Plymouth South High School, I mean, we're all thinking about them. They have a really good program through Skills USA, and it's for students that are interested in a career in that type of field and marketing. And I know, Jordan, you're so great at getting social media.
Not really. I follow what other people do. I was thinking about two different options. One is asking the students to help put together a marketing package on our behalf as a project.
Yeah.
And then, secondly, there's a local communications company, and he's done some work for Veterans Network that I serve for, and he is really good at it. I'd love to get some local media spots, whether it just be public access television or local radio, like the Great TD or something. Yeah, so.
I could also ask Brockton Community Assets if they cover Plymouth, because they do a lot of stories. They go, I mean, I'm not sure, but I can email the person I know and see if he'd be willing to cover. See, they did Brockton for us, they did the hearing.
Well, Plymouth has PACT TV.
Yeah, okay.
And I had talked with someone there originally about doing something with us and then it didn't go anywhere, but I'm happy to follow up.
Okay, okay.
That'd be great.
Yeah, you definitely want somebody there.
Yeah, I think we could certainly get PACT TV to do that. WATD, they always look for people to come and talk on different shows.
Yep.
So certainly if one of us wanted to go and.
What's it called?
WATD, they're out of Marshfield.
Radio up in South Shore.
95.9, yeah.
There's also 99.1, which is right near Plymouth.
Okay, yeah. And then the other vendor would be Facebook, because we could pay for Facebook posts, boosts, you know, you can pay like a dollar, five dollars.
Oh, they often come to like 50 bucks.
A 50 bucks?
Because they get you to sign up to release it so many times. Like the first one is maybe a dollar.
Okay.
And then at the end of the three weeks, they're.
Right, they do it every couple of days.
But that's a great idea to sponsor the post as we, you know, put, in terms of a budget, $50.
Right.
Do we want to create flyers and how much is a printed flyer, you know, anything like that, which.
Well, that might be part of what we ask the students in their marketing package to do, and also the local community company.
I don't know if it's something you all want to consider. His name is Rick Carlson and his company's called Carlson Creative. He's just somebody that seems involved here in the community in Plymouth. Even if we just had in our budget, I think we asked for 250, even if we can just give him $100 of that and say, what can you do for us to put together a marketing plan because we need to spend most of the money on, let's say, printing or posters or.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I can run our logo and some, you know, basic paper flyers on my, you know, on my firm's machine, that's not a big deal. I'm happy to do that.
Flares we can handle.
You can do yourself.
But it's the, yeah, exactly.
Up the end, through the professional perspective.
Yeah.
So I wonder then, as I'm taking notes, do we want maybe someone to take on tackle radio? Someone tackles TV and someone can tackle the papers? Because like, for, I'm thinking where we are in Bedford, like the Standard Times, they will spotlight different organizations. Who's the local Plymouth paper that might do it? With the old Colling Memorial.
And then they have Patriot Ledger.
Yeah, Patriot Ledger's a good one.
Does anyone want to take? I guess that might be the ones we confirm the date.
Right.
We could talk about during our marketing approach.
Yep. I know that my state rep, Jo Miskinow, wanted to talk to me about how things are going and what we're doing and, you know, put a little spotlight on her webpage about this organization.
And invite her to the hearing, absolutely.
Oh, absolutely. I should invite all the rest of senators. And even, you know, even the chair of the Board of Selectmen.
And she would love it.
In all, yeah, well, she's the one who asked me to apply. She's the one who told me about this. So, so all of, you know, chairs of, chairs of boards of selectmen, you know, any other agencies in town, you know, that we might, in all of the towns in Plymouth County, too. We don't want to forget the towns.
And that's where we get local and so convenient as a, yes, for the information.
Yeah, I want that, too. I just have to be specific.
Yeah. It's up there from where we're going. Just down that, this way. Yep, down that. Take a right and then a left.
Printing is just so expensive.
Print nice posters.
It is.
It adds up.
It adds up quickly.
But I also think that, you know, so much is done via social media these days.
Totally.
And these newsletters and everything else, so.
I'd love to avoid using paper.
Yeah.
For an event that comes in.
We'll be environmentally friendly.
I like that. That's our commitment, is save your money.
But there are also lots of people who don't have, you know, in our demographic who don't have, you know, easy access to internet on a constant basis, so I think we do need to make sure we do do some old school paper, paperwork as well.
You can also send digital flyers to each of the community organizations and ask them to post it.
Yeah, the town halls, too.
And the town halls as well, that might be one way to.
Right, maybe we strategize where we're going to hang our printed flyers and then we ask others to help us out.
Yeah. So let's talk about it, and obviously, we definitely don't want to tackle radio, TV papers until we're a little bit further down the road, but I think for our next meeting we should assign that.
I can take that on.
All three?
Yeah, it's totally fine.
Yep. And we could, I have some folks, and we can divvy it up, I, you know, have some folks at ATD and the Patriot Ledger, true, but we'll talk about it.
Yeah, okay.
So, all right, so we'll make a note to tackle our, our marketing plan like in February.
In February.
Okay.
So that we have, we have our date, we have more information about where we're headed in terms of, and what we're going to do in terms of vendors. We'll make some decisions hopefully about all those things in February.
And one thing I wanted to bring up, either this meeting or perhaps next, is the structure of the hearing and some ideas that I've been sort of researching and learning a little bit more about effective ways of hosting, and different ways of hosting here.
Have you read about breakout sessions?
I've been looking into that.
Yeah, we're doing an International Women's Day event and our panel is the shortest thing on the schedule because we've been like, kind of data mining from people and they want to talk more in small group. And the model of getting up and speaking at a microphone is too intimidating and triggering for a lot of people, so moving away from that and having more small group discussion.
Yeah, I was thinking, you know, hybrid method would be great, you know, starting out, you know, with a panel and a large sort of group format and shifting towards the smaller groups. And each commissioner sits in with a smaller group of folks and is sort of recording and documenting as we go, but I feel like some folks are going to be absolutely intimidated to come in front of cameras, in front of a microphone. With a whole panel of folks just sitting, like it's, like they're testifying, or they are testifying, but it just isn't a different way of feeling than a conversation that you could have with folks and feeding off each other's ideas.
And one thing that we do at the public, at our public hearings is we do ask people if they do not want to be recorded when they give their testimony, to just let us know. And then we will make sure that the cameras are turned off for that person and maybe they speak at the end or something. But that is something definitely that you can say to people.
But that's important to consider in terms of space, right? Because if you wanted to have smaller group discussions here, that would be really hard to do, you know, so if you're thinking about.
Yeah, it would be benched by, I mean, as, you know, as a professor, I have to do this all the time, the room limitations, I always do group work, right? So I go back and forth between, you know, the one speaker format and then getting folks into smaller groups. So I feel like there are ways to do it, even in here, you know, where you have the, these two benches are a group and they have folks turn around, you know, so I feel like.
Yeah.
I can help it happen anywhere in the group process.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, but it was just something to think about, you know, what kind of format do we want? And I'm happy to put on Google Docs links to some of the literature that I've been reading about how to, you know, create effective, you know, and inclusive hearings for folks of different backgrounds.
All right, and then let's definitely have an agenda item for that for our next meeting anyway, since we'll, we'll need to, if you could get that posted.
Yeah.
So we can think about it before our next meeting, and I will get our agendas out earlier as well, so we have more time to do any proper research as well.
You know who talks about that a lot is Colleen De Wiki.
Yeah.
That she researches.
Is there anything else, Laura, you need from us other than trying to confirm dates for follow-up on the grant application?
I just want to recap because I've got my ducks in a row.
Yep.
So like I mentioned, I'd really like to have our information submitted by the end of next week because that seems to align with what your executive session was going to do.
So, um, the transportation component is being handled by Carolyn. And you're going to kick the other part too.
Yeah.
So Janice and Karen will take the information presented to Kara. Kara will enter and give that back to me.
So, well, I actually think that, that we don't need to necessarily have that confirmed for the next step. I think what we can tell them is, you know, our, our vendors are either going to be GATRA or Lyft or local taxi services, which we still have to determine.
And that's going to be sufficient?
And that would be sufficient.
Exactly.
Right, so it's, it's just the dates that we need to confirm.
And that's going to be Carolyn, myself, and Christina?
And Christina.
Okay.
Yeah.
And that information will go to you and then you'll flush it out and get it back.
Yep.
So that takes care of the transportation and location.
Location.
And then next was the...
And then marketing, right, childcare, I'm sorry. So childcare, I also think that we can tell them, we're going to talk to Plymouth South VOTAC to see if they can provide childcare. And I don't think that we have a backup for that at this point in time. So that's what we're going to at least explore. Do we have, is there some other entity or agency? Or would we, who else provides childcare services here?
I mean, we can reach out to a local, um, like Kinder College and Kinder Care and those types of environments. I don't know what their liabilities are off of their properties.
Right.
Um, but they may have people that, you know, go out in the community and provide services.
But a lot like, you know, when children, when they're children, but, you know, young girls, they want to babysit. They have to do babysitting hours.
Yes.
Isn't there like a program that we can kind of contact to say, okay, they have their hours, so they...
We need three of them or something.
We need three young girls.
Right.
Come on, come on, come on over.
Boys and girls.
Yes, that's true.
Yes, sorry.
Believe me, it's okay.
I have lots of boys, yeah.
I got it, it's not just the girls who babysit anymore.
No.
Is there any place, so I remember when I was a kid, I went to, you know, the local foster hospital and I got trained and certified. Is there any place in Plymouth that Jordan Hospital does that?
Some of the schools do them. Do, do, yes, babysitting training. I mean, I know like that.
And then they have a list of people, so I'm wondering where...
I'm a little, we have to be very careful, obviously, about who we work with because of liability concerns. So I would rather work with an entity that does all the background checks. Certifies it and make sure that they, you know, they know what they're doing. Because we, we don't have the time to take that on. Um, so why don't we at least see what school has to say? And then we may have to scramble after that. We may have to think about something else. And in the meantime, perhaps, um...
So what would be useful though is, is if you know, if you can at least find some of the alternatives.
Right, exactly, that's what I was going to say.
Right. I don't know if this is an alternative, but Jordan, you made a really good point about the diapering issue because that does put a barrier up.
Yeah.
You know, in terms of liability and certification. So the early childhood program itself is from two point nine, potty trained on. There's nothing from zero to two point nine, but it ends at age five, which is when kindergarten starts.
Yeah.
Age five to, let's say, eight or nine would be an ideal age group for Plymouth Town Rec. If they could run a program adjacent to our meeting from like the five to nine age group. It still means we would have no coverage from zero to two point nine. Um, because of the diapering factor.
Mm-hmm.
And you said that the YW typically does not certify people to change.
Oh, the YMCA, they just do that as part of their liability. It's how they're able to run a drop-in center. And the babies are six weeks old. They take them as young as six weeks, but they do not do any diapering.
It's like, so that's the same licensing then that a gym would have. Because gyms can't change diapers. So we're still going to be in a situation where we don't have childcare opportunity for anybody at age.
So does that mean that even if the parent could come back and change the diaper, they just don't take that age group?
No, they do, but they're, they do take them.
The mom might have to leave the hearing and come back.
But that's what would happen in a gym or anything.
Because they come and get you, because I know.
Yeah, they do, they come and get you.
Right, so you see, but that, I think, covers that issue potentially.
Yeah. It's better than not having anything, you know, so.
And then the Plymouth South High School, you know, take them two point nine to five. And then if we could ask Plymouth Town Rec to do five to nine or something, that girl, the nine-year-old.
Yeah.
We could cover eight groups.
So Plymouth, so Town Rec is, would be another potential.
And they have a robust opportunity for programming. I'm also looking at care.com as a, as a backup sort of plan. I'm looking into their, how they cover their background checks and so forth. Care.com is, you sort of just say, I need someone.
I've used it, yeah.
Yeah, but they of course have to deal with liability issues and background check issues and so it's just...
And what they charge.
Right.
Yep.
So I don't know if that's a viable backup.
Can look at all of them.
Yep.
Yeah, that's great.
So can I just ask then some clarifying questions after our notes? So is our, if we had to prioritize locations, is Plymouth South High School our top choice because of the childcare onsite?
Well, we were going to find out if they'd go off-site too, to the...
So is our library our top choice?
I don't know, what is our top choice? That's a good question.
Public transportation, we know goes to the library.
Right, library, exactly.
Okay.
Correct. So I think library...
Plymouth North is right across the street from the library.
That, I mean, that's a potential location.
That's interesting.
So they got to where you know they...
Library Plymouth South.
I mean, isn't it, it's just like right across the street.
It's right here, it is.
Yeah.
It's right over there, yeah.
And the library is just one...
The library's on, yeah, the library's on.
It's just a south street. It's just further down.
Over a street.
Still.
So when I talk to GATRA, I'm going to say, like, location, am I going to say library in the Plymouth South High School?
Yeah. Unless they make a special route.
For a special route, right. Or, or the Plymouth County offices.
Okay.
So I think in order, if I, library Plymouth South High School, Plymouth County offices, or should we add Plymouth North?
Well, it's a lot closer to their route.
Okay.
Plymouth North. What's that, is that a...
It's a high school.
It's right across the street.
It's on over, it's right here on over the street.
And, um, Karen, do you mind checking in with Plymouth North about their space as well? You do the high school space?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, um, and then we'll find out about the VOTAC programs, childcare onsite and offsite, which may sort of focus our decisions. Uh, and then we'll find out about what we can find about transportation. And again, we have the three possible options. Um, childcare obviously is, at least our first choice is going to be the VOTAC program at Plymouth South High School. Uh, we're also going to explore Plymouth Town Rec and care.com providers.
And who's taking the lead on, um, I could contact Plymouth Town Rec
Okay.
once we have the date finalized and location finalized.
Okay, that's fine. And care.com will, will reach out and think about what we can, if neither of the other two options work. And obviously we need to have a, a date and a location set before we could go, before we could go there. But that's an option, just to put on the list for the, the grant application. And then in terms of marketing, um, Laura, you are also going to reach out to, um, the, the VOTAC program at Plymouth South to see if the students could put together a marketing package. That would be our first priority.
Is that what the commission agrees on?
I love the idea personally. I think using the kids and getting them involved and aware.
Civic engagement.
Yeah, exactly. That's exactly right.
Sure.
Um, and I'd also be happy to talk to your local guy as well, um, as either a portion of that or a backup.
Okay.
And just to know more about what he does, right?
Yeah.
Right, exactly, because he may be someone who could advise us down the road. He may be someone who's willing to help out a little bit and, you know, maybe we can...
Marketing plan.
You know, maybe we can do a little, you know, we spend, you know, a hundred dollars with him and, and then he gives us a hundred dollars worth of services next time, you know.
Okay.
Just sort of, uh...
So that means that my to-do list, I want to make sure I'm not forgetting anything. Call Jen Harris at the library and let her know about Plymouth County Commission status of them. And as far as being registered, five oh one two three, that's through the Mass Commission, right? We could say that we are a registered nonprofit?
We're not a registered nonprofit, we're a state, we're a state agent, we're a, a public agency.
Right, okay. And then contact Plymouth High School about the marketing team. I think North and South has their own, to see if they're willing to take this on as a civic engagement project. And then contact Rick Carlson to see if he'd be willing to do an in-kind or consulting thing here.
Right.
Commission for the upcoming hearing, if not after. And then for the grant application, add vendors GATRA and Lyft as potential. And then for a public childcare opportunity for the hearing, add possibility of care.
Care.com.
Care.com.
Plymouth Town Rec.
Plymouth Town Rec.
And the VOTAC.
And the VOTAC.
List.
Yeah.
And then for, um, not giving childcare or transportation. Oh, and for a date, we need to, it's the first round, okay, got it.
And feel free to, you know, if you want me to take eyes on it and look through it and check with my list as well once you put something together.
Okay.
I'm happy to do that.
And Laura, I'm trying to take really detailed notes for you that should hopefully help with the grant, right?
That's great.
But, and we can tackle childcare once we have, you know, a space confirmed and I'm happy to help with that.
Okay.
And even, maybe it is something that we bring up the YW, the YW kids staffers. If the library says, hey, you have a room, you just have to provide your own childcare. I have childcare workers, we just have to, let's get a room secured.
List that YWCA as, as a vendor for your...
List them as a vendor for, exactly.
For childcare.
Just do that, because you want all, whatever potential alternatives, if you get them out there.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. Yeah. The reason we have to have the list is for the grant application, which we need to get into.
It's in there.
It's got a list exactly who the vendor is going to be. And it's the YWCA of...
Uh, Southeastern Mass.
Southeastern Mass.
So our entire service area is south of Boston.
Wow.
Dude. Um, but we have, you know, staff who are Corey fingerprinted, like easily licensed. So I'm not sure that we can do this, but let's, for the grant.
Let's put it on there and see if it's an option. Okay. Okay, great. All right. I think that is, um, plenty, um, for the hearing. Anything else, anybody think we could talk about now before our next meeting? The next thing up is future meeting schedule and location. So are we good on hearing and location?
Yes.
And grant application for now? All right. Uh, future meeting schedule and location. So let's, um, plan out the, let's try to plan out the rest of the year. February.
What about like second Saturday of every month?
So that would be the ninth. We had talked about flipping back and forth between Saturdays and a weeknight. But is Saturday morning seem to work, it's better?
Better for me.
Better for everybody?
Better for me.
Okay, that's fine with me.
Fine with me.
So February ninth is coming up frequently. Um, all right, February ninth here. This seems to work.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And then March ninth? Do you want to go sixteen?
I can't be here the sixteen.
Okay.
But don't, don't hope that, you know.
Yep.
I also can't be here the twenty-third.
Okay.
So...
So let's do the ninth in case we need to have, and let's do the ninth then of March. Is that, okay?
So February ninth and March ninth?
Yep.
That would be, yeah, the second Saturday. And this, right now is the second Saturday of January, so just kidding. Yeah.
And then do we want to have, we probably should have an April meeting before our hearing on the twenty-fourth. So we want to try, um, Saturday, April thirteenth is the Saturday before vacation week. So I'm thinking that's probably not, we want to try April sixth?
Do you feel like that's too far?
Or the twentieth, the twentieth would be like days before.
The twentieth is Passover and the day before Easter is the twenty-first. Um, I, I'll be traveling most likely.
A weeknight, the week before, but then that's April vacation.
Right, that's April vacation.
Do we then want to make our preferred date May first? Would that make everyone's lives easier for the hearing?
So we would do the hearing and then our meeting at the same time?
Well, we, we're trying to schedule a, um, last meeting before the hearing to sort of finish.
Why can't we do it the thirteenth again?
It's the Saturday of that start of April vacation. If people are going away, are they going to be not available on Saturday morning?
I'm available.
I'm here.
Okay, all right, then let's do April thirteenth. If we think we need, um, another meeting after that, we can, you know, we can figure out what we need to do. April twenty-fourth is our hearing and then we're going to have at four thirty. So these meetings are at nine AM. Four thirty and then, um, four thirty to six thirty and then a six forty-five business meeting. If we need to have one. We'll have a brief one if, um, and then in May, so, um, you know, our report is due to the commission. I'll just check the bylaws because I want to make sure we have time after our hearing to prepare the report, to talk about it at the May meeting. I think it's early in, I think it's the first of the month. It's in the bylaws.
Probably because I know we have to get all the reports from the regionals because our report to our own authorities is due by the end of June.
Right.
Just... And you should put down advocacy day is May twenty-first. Um, and that is where all of the regional commissions and anybody who wants to come are invited to the State House from like nine to one o'clock and we meet with legislators and advocate on bills and that kind of thing. And then we have the regional, this is the semi-annual regional commissioners' meeting after that. And it's usually around like one o'clock. And we have lunch there and everything.
Breakfast, lunch.
Meetings, so.
Do you know what time that ends?
Well, I think, I think advocacy day is from nine to one and so maybe this meeting is from one to two?
Yeah.
Um, at least, although that's very short.
I saw two thirty as the...
Two thirty, that makes, yeah.
So Tuesday, May twenty-fourth is, is advocacy day.
And, and the regional commissioners' meeting, this is twice a year. We have one in Worcester in December. So then this is, again, it's a way of everyone coming.
So we have to report on or before, um, June second. So the... I think that probably then we should meet in May. I am going to be away for commencement for the Law School Board. I sit on, on the, the second Saturday in May, which is also that weekend is, well, it's Mother's Day the next day. But, um, if we met on May eighteenth, because the next weekend is already Memorial Day weekend. I can't wait till summer. And then we have to have the report out, um, that next, by the, two weeks later.
Sounds good.
So May eighteenth, Saturday, nine AM. And then, um, and that will really be the end of our first year. Um, and then I guess we could have a, a June meeting on June eighth. And then we're off for July and August and reconvene in September. So with that June meeting, we could start planning out the fall or the May, June meeting. Okay.
Yeah, do you know when they release the legislative priorities for advocacy day?
Um, hmm, um, I mean, we're working on those right now. We're, you know, the legislative committee is, and we've got, and also just one thing that's really exciting is that the governor signed the Equitable Disability Insurance Bill, which we've been working on for ten years.
I have that on our new business list, but, oh, oh, well, I know.
No, no, go ahead, that's fine. That was, we had to talk about that. Anyway, I, I, I think we are certainly, we're, we're working on those right now and we are going to, um, be probably finalizing that in, um, let's see, we're already in January. I mean, right now, we're actually working on helping file legislation.
Yeah.
Right, that has to be filed by next week. And so...
Is that the filed date?
Yeah, and so, so I, I would say by February we should know, you know, but anyway.
Are there a lot of refiles for the session?
Yeah, yeah, they are, although they get, they get somewhat, you know, amended in some ways, but, yeah, there are. We can talk about that at new business, I can tell you guys what.
Okay, terrific. Sorry, I don't mean to.
Jen Harris, I do need to be eleven o'clock in the night.
Yep, okay, all right, so, um, we've got our schedules. Yep, okay, all right, so we've got our schedules, just a couple of things under old business, new members, I completely boofed that and haven't forwarded that on, but I will finish that this weekend, I apologize to all of you. I know Christina and Janice were at the November hearing in Brockton.
I was as well.
And you were as well, Liz, thank you. Any reports, thoughts, perspective?
Bless you.
In a couple of minutes? Which thought, how it went?
Well, well attended, bless you.
Thank you.
It was good, I mean, you know, a lot of the women that came forth, they had some strong issues, you know, some were like, you know, starting nonprofits, and I think they were just looking to us to say, to see what, you know, how you can kind of get the word out, you know, be a sounding board and kind of, you know, expel on their, their mission. A lot of it was childcare, transportation, English as a second language. Some of the women that came work in different organizations and are finding that that's, that's the real deal, that English is not the main language anymore, so, and it's trying to find resources for these individuals to kind of translate and to navigate in the community.
So housing didn't come up as being one of the top priorities?
I didn't, no, I don't.
Which is interesting, because usually that's definitely...
That's a good issue.
We do hear of that everywhere.
It just depends on what people have.
Transportation, childcare, one woman came up and said that she has been sober for so many years, and she started a group for sober women.
Mothers in Recovery.
Yes.
Just really...
Our addiction.
Yeah. So that seems to be one of the issues as well.
There's not, how many people were there?
You know what, it was, it wasn't like that well attended, but we had, I thought, fantastic discussions. And people really had a lot of back and forth, and really, I don't know, I know it was the day that people had a lot of time just traveling and getting there, but, and then there's another person who also talked about engaging like girls in civic engagement, because it's one of the things that we're trying to focus on. So anyway, I thought it was great, I thought it was really good.
I've heard a bit about folks who are in like substance recovery, and how hard it is to maintain relationships with children, and there aren't a lot of places in order to recover and have your children with you, and sort of the gap, I think, between the need and the services offered in that area was meaningful to me.
Yeah, and also the need for trauma-informed care, and just that, you know, people are experiencing trauma, you know, immigrants in their own countries and then coming here, and then domestic violence issues, and, you know, kind of the integration into the US and the society here, just some of the challenges that immigrants are experiencing, too, I heard some of that as well, so, and just the need for people who are really trained, you know, in multiple languages and trauma-informed care, and to understand kind of all those nuances.
That's right, and the one we were talking about with the, with the young girls is that she had started, or she had this program where they were registering kids on, at high schools, at campuses to vote?
Vote, yes.
Really? So really interesting.
Yes, that was fabulous.
And extending that program, so there's just, I mean, it was a lot of interesting issues.
Yeah, it was wonderful to attend, I'd say.
Yeah, it was great. Wonderful. You guys did a great job, too, Janice, the Brockton, you know, municipal commission as well.
And I felt bad, because when I got there, I was going to sit with the Plymouths.
No, you got to, it's your here.
Yeah, so they're like, you got to sit over here. So I said, okay, you know, I didn't have...
Well, I'm proud that of the two, two of the issues that they identified as barriers we're working on to help people get to our hearing, so.
Oh, absolutely.
I mean, I know that's only a small, small piece of it, but...
You know, Karen, that's one of the reasons why at the statewide commission, we love your proposal, because you're addressing the two, those are two huge barriers, childcare and transportation for so many things. It's great you're doing that.
That's good. Okay, new business, you know, would you like to tell us about advocacy day and then the follow-up with the legislation?
So advocacy day is for everybody to come, we've had, you know, two hundred and fifty people come to the State House, or more, three hundred come to the State House, for, you know, all around the state, and we get to meet with lots of our legislative leaders, you know, the Senate President will probably speak to us, you know, different, different people, leadership will come and talk to us, and then we divide everybody up, you'll sit like in tables from your particular region, and then divide up and go out, and you get sort of a list of who are you going to go and talk to in terms of members, and they may be sometimes your members or maybe other members, and talk about the legislative priorities. And then we have lunch, and then afterwards we have the regional commission meeting, and it's, it's great, it's just an opportunity to come and, and speak. And we are deciding, right now, we've also sometimes had girls come from different regional commissions, and we're thinking now that we would like to set up a separate Girls Advocacy Day, but we're going to start it with probably a public hearing for girls, one year followed by advocacy day for another year, because it's great to have them, too. So then as far as what just got, so we, the Mass Commission, statewide commission, we've been the lead advocate for this bill, that amazingly got passed. It's been in the State House for, for ten years, which is to end the difference between men and women in premiums for purchasing private disability insurance. It's one of the last insurances where they could charge women more than men, because other ones have already been, and, you know, it's violated our state constitution and other things. It got, we amazingly got it through the House, and then we got it, the Senate passed it on the very last day of the session, and sent it to the governor, and, you know, we just had lots of people who were involved in calling and everything else. So that's great. I mean, and it's the end of an incredible, so many great bills got passed this year. And anyway, so we're going to be working on, one of the bills that we are championing, that we are what the lead advocate for is Joan Muschino's bill, Muschino's bills, on campaign funds for childcare. And so that is definitely one of our priorities, and she is going to be re-filing it with Mike Connelly in the House and with Senator Jalen in the Senate. And it's going to be a little bit different, we're not having the amendment that kind of narrowed it down a little bit, but that, we know that's one of our main, and another one, one of our big priorities that we already know that we're working on is the tipped minimum wage, to raise the tipped minimum wage, because, you know, the minimum wage was raised, but the tipped minimum wage is still lower, and actually to get rid of it, so that, it's either you raise it more or you get rid of a different thing, it was called the One Fair Wage Campaign, where everybody gets the same wage. That, I can tell you, is definitely...
That's going to be a tough one.
Yeah, it's a tough one, but it's, but it's really important for, you know, retail workers and...
And the city of Cambridge is trying to move that forward separately, you can see a legislate.
Yeah, yeah, there are lots of different places, but it's definitely, and it helps a lot of low-income workers, a lot of women in, you know, retail and fast food and everything.
Great, excellent. And then I just sent around, Nina forwarded to me, a request from the Women's Suffrage Celebration Coalition of Massachusetts to partner with our commission for the hundredth anniversary of Women's Suffrage and the ratification of nineteen...
Next year.
For them, it is next year. The centenary of Massachusetts signing and ratifying is this year, actually.
Yeah, nineteen nineteen.
Yeah, so twenty nineteen. So she simply asked us, me, to fill out a form, to tell us a little bit about the organization, she'll share, you know, will read a share event on our website. I think it's a great idea, I think it's really important, I think without suffrage we would be nowhere. So I would like to sign us up to participate and partner with her.
We're, we're a partner, and there's a huge, huge list.
Could Brockton do this, too?
Oh, you could definitely do it, if you, if you want another, do you want another set of the information?
Yeah, you can.
I mean, Freddie K, I can have an extra, reach out to Freddie.
Freddie, who's the president, she's trying to get as many people, but if you, once you become a partner, then you're going to know about all of the different, you know, celebrations about the women's right to vote. I think it's just important to...
Same important.
Celebrate it, so that's, absolutely.
Was, knew the vacancy, has that been appointed?
So that's what I was saying before, I have to transmit, I have to transmit the information, which I will do this weekend.
That's right.
I apologize, I forgot.
I thought we got information from you.
You didn't, no, I haven't. There was a discussion back and forth that didn't we do this, and yes, we did vote on it, I haven't transmitted it.
Oh, got it, oh, good, okay, fine, that's great.
Anything else before we adjourn?
No, I just got confirmation that we can use this space for all of our future meetings.
Oh, that's great, thank you.
And I'm going to ask next about the backup dates for the hearings.
Perfect, excellent.
For your going forward, I will put the keys.
You copy your own. All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Is there a second?
I have a second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned at eleven oh four, thank you all very much.